...because we've got busy work to do before we come to the interesting parts. So I'll start by reading the required opening statement and then we'll do some housekeeping and finally we'll get to the cases you're here for. So the statement is, "This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment, being held on Wednesday, the 27th of April 2016 at 7:30 PM in the municipal complex. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this regular meeting has been provided by prominently displaying the schedule of regular meetings on the official notice board in the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of the schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, the Trenton Times, the Trentonian, and to Comcast Cable of New Jersey Inc. A copy was also filed with the Clerk of Princeton." Could you call the role for us, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Ms. Farrington?
Mr. Floyd?
Ms. Rockstrom?
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Ms. Suri?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good. We'll let you sit down and then we'll review the minutes. So the first task we have is to comment, modify, or accept the minutes of the meeting of January the 27th, 2016. These were available to us on the web and we were asked to send in comments. If the version we have is acceptable to you, I would like a motion to approve and a seconda. If there are changes that should be made, we should do it now. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a seconda?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a seconda. Would you call the role for us, please?
Thank you. Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Ms. Rockstrom?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Ms. Suri?
Yes.
Thank you. It's approved.
Good. So now we have a series of resolutions to memorialize. The first of these is 199 Snowden Lane LLC owner and the file number of that is Z1616-312V. Again, I believe these were available for us well before the meeting. Are there any changes, comments? If there are no changes, can I have...
I'll move to approve the resolution.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a seconda?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a seconda and I'll get our attorney to let those who can vote.
No, Mr. Tenenbaum is actually not at that meeting, it says. Sorry? He can't, he can't...
I'll draw my second.
He seconded.
Yes.
So we need another seconda as well.
I'll second it.
So we have another seconda.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Ms. Rockstrom?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes. The next case is 694 Ewing Street. The file number on that is Z1515-297V. That was denying a C variance request. Are there any modifications or comments on this memorialization? If not, is there a motion to approve as presented? Actually, there's going to be complaint. Well, the only people that can move in favor and...
Well, actually, we have Ms. Clayton, Ms. Rockstrom, or you, Chairman Royce. We've got three people here tonight who...
They were opposed to the motion.
Correct, but that's what carried. It was the opposition. It was the denial.
Oh, I see. So we've got three of us at any rate.
Yep, correct.
All right. Well, I'll move to approve the resolution.
Okay.
So you've moved and...
You have to second.
And we have a seconda?
I'll second.
Good.
All right. And those eligible to vote then will be Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Rockstrom?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes. Okay. The next one is the 254-258 Nassau Street LLC owner and applicant and that carries the file number Z1515-181V. Lots of pages on that. Are there any necessary modifications to this?
I'll move to approve the resolution.
We have a motion to accept. Is there a seconda?
I'll second.
Okay.
And those members eligible to vote, Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Ms. Rockstrom?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes. The next is 39 Pine Street, which has the file number Z1515-318V.
I just need to make one correction. We should indicate that those absent, it erroneously indicates Mr. Tenenbaum was absent. That's not correct. It was Ms. Rockstrom who was not there for the meeting.
Oh, so the...
So I'm just correcting, yeah.
People that Ms. Rockstrom was not here for the meeting.
I'm correcting what we have in there.
Okay. Any comments, additional comments to this? If not, can I have a motion to approve by somebody who was here?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion to approve?
Yeah, maximize.
You have to say it so that the...
I'll make a motion to approve.
A seconda for the motion?
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a seconda?
All right, and those members eligible to vote, Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Ms. Rockstrom?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes. The next is 39 Pine Street, which has the file number Z1515-318V.
I just need to make one correction. We should indicate that those absent, it erroneously indicates Mr. Tenenbaum was absent. That's not correct. It was Ms. Rockstrom who was not there for the meeting.
Oh, so the...
So I'm just correcting, yeah.
People that Ms. Rockstrom was not here for the meeting.
I'm correcting what we have in there.
Okay. Any comments, additional comments to this? If not, can I have a motion to approve by somebody who was here?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion to approve?
Yeah, maximize.
You have to say it so that the...
I'll make a motion to approve.
A seconda for the motion?
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a seconda?
All right, and those members eligible to vote, Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Ms. Suri?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes. And then the last case was David Cohen, an applicant, challenging zoning officer's interpretation. That carried the case number Z1616-33441. Are there any changes needed to this?
I'll move to approve.
You're moving a motion?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Tenenbaum moves. Is there anyone to second the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a seconda?
All right, and those members eligible to vote, Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Ms. Suri?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes. Okay. I have to turn my page over and I think we've come to the important part of the meeting. So our first case... Oh, wait a moment. I am confused.
Yeah, you're right.
Sorry?
You're right. That's true.
Yeah, well, that's the one, but that's not the piece of paper I've got in my hand. I don't seem to have... Well, the first case is 80 Rolling Need, which carries the case number Z1616-331V and this is a C2 variance according to township things. If you'll come and sit down, make yourselves comfortable, what I will do is to ask Mr. Bridger to read the essence of his memorandum to the board into the record and then I'll ask you to present your case.
Mr. Bridger, before we swear you in, I'll just indicate that the notice thing is in order and the board has jurisdiction. Mr. Bridger, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do. Thanks. Good evening. The applicants, Beatrice and Michael Bloom, are the owners of 80 Rolling Need and they're making a hardship application pursuant, well, actually a C2 variance pursuant to Section 10B20 of the former Princeton Land Use Ordinance to permit the expansion of a priorly non-compliant garage in exception to the required front yard setback and the setback to height ratio. Property is located in the R5 zone and is subject to the use in bulk regulations in accordance with 10B253 and 255 and 246 of the former Princeton Township Land Use Ordinance. The existing single-family use is permitted as of right. The subject lot is non-compliant with respect to the lot area. The requirement is 21,780 square feet. The existing lot area is 17,396 square feet. It's also non-compliant with respect to the lot width. The requirement's 100 feet and the existing is 84 feet. And the subject property is non-compliant with respect to the following bulk requirements. The front yard setback requirement is 25. The existing is nine and a half. The right yard setback requirement is 15. The existing is 10. The setback to height ratio on the right side, the requirement is 1 to 1 and the existing is 1 to 2.12. And the setback to height ratio on the left side is 1 to 1 requirement with a 1 to 1.4, excuse me. The applicant is proposing to add a new 9 foot by 5 inch, 9 foot 5 inch by 19 11 inch garage bay to the existing two-car garage that's attached to the house. The roof of the existing garage will be removed and a new roof will be reconstructed to accommodate the larger garage. The existing garage currently encroaches into the required front yard setback and violates the required setback to height ratio. The addition will increase the existing degree of noncompliance of both of these bulk variances. The applicant is also proposing several additions to the property that are permitted as of right. The property's on a corner, so it has two front yards. The addition requires the following variances. The required front yard setback, as I indicated earlier, is 25 feet and the proposed will be 8.6 feet. And the setback to height requirement is 1 to 1, whereas the proposed will be 1 to 1.286. Although it's less than the existing degree of noncompliance where the height to setback ratio is still considered a variance, they're requesting consideration under the C2 and I would be glad to answer any questions you might have. Excuse me.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Bridger? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bridger. So you're going to show us some pictures and talk to us, is that right?
Yes. Do I push the button or is that...
You can push the button and a little red light should come on.
Thank you.
That's right, so you're now live. And we'll need to get you sworn by our attorney.
Mr. Bloom, if you raise your right hand, you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
Good. So go ahead and make a comment.
So Beatrice and I have lived in Princeton for 16 years. Prior to that, we lived in North Jersey and we had a similarly configured house to the Rolling Need house. We successfully, it was a house that was built in 1940s and was, I guess you could say we had an affinity towards this era of housing and houses. We did a successful renovation there and then shortly after we did that, we moved to Princeton where we found a house that needed a little bit of love and care and we did the same thing at our current residence at 42 White Pine Lane and made that, took a house that was, I'll just say it was completely green inside and out and made that into a home where our children went to school here in Princeton and now graduated, graduated from high school. So in seeing this property, we said this is another house that's of similar vintage that we could do some upgrades to or perhaps make fit for our next phase. And in doing that, we sought out Toni, who's our architect, Toni Seaver, and she's done quite a bit of work on these kinds of capes. So there's a number of options. We could have just said, "Let's take this beautiful property and this house is past its stage and move on," but we've opted to put together a nice design, I think, thanks to Toni's help, that will basically fit into the character of the property, of the neighborhood. We've met with the neighbors and I think some of them are here tonight. We've talked to them individually, you know, obviously. So with that, I just wanted to say it's interesting that the front faces Rolling Need, the orientation has lots of sun and the addition works well. I think all the addition, other aspects of the addition are well within the bulk regulations. It's just not enough room in the existing garage. I have some additional photos of how two cars fit in the existing garage and there's just no room for other accoutrements that one might store in a garage. And so we opted to build this, or planned to have this third bay to be primarily used for storage of things like bicycles and trash cans and snow blower and generator and things like that that people need nowadays living in Princeton. And I think the benefits of the proposal that we would, you know, preserve the existing house, it fits in with the neighborhood, as I said, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about it or any concerns you might have. Does anybody have anything else?
Ma'am, if you're going to testify, we just need your name and then we're going to swear you in.
My name is Toni Schreiber.
And Ms. Schreiber, do you swear from the testimony you give this...
Turn the microphone off.
Okay. Toni Schreiber.
And do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do, thank you. What was I going to say?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
You were the architect for the project, is that right?
Yeah, I'm the architect.
And you're a practicing architect in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
Okay.
I live around the corner from you, so I practice in our neighborhood a lot. The existing garage is tight, it basically fits two cars.
I have a job hearing you, so you've got to pull the microphone closer to you or something.
Is that better? Oh, here we go. Okay. So it fits two cars and there's no room for storage, there's no room for bicycles or any of that. So when we were designing the addition and the improvements to the property, we looked at putting the garage elsewhere, at different options for the garage because the garage is not compliant and we didn't want to continue with that. So we looked at possibly putting it in the rear of the house more toward the back garden. The lot itself is very thin, it's exceptionally skinny, so we don't have a lot of, we'd have to go straight back and it would eat up a lot of the garden space in the back, which is quite beautiful and I know that people have planted a lot of special trees there and also to get to the driveway from back there and having your bicycles in your backyard in a shed just didn't make any practical sense in terms of coming out onto the street. So we looked at that. Another option would be to put the garage in the front corner of the lot. It's on? On? Yeah. Okay. So it would meet the zoning requirements if we put the garage here and that's the front corner of Rolling Need and Deer Path and in front of the house and we just didn't like that option either. It just didn't seem attractive or safe for sightlines on the street.
There's quite a bit of traffic in the morning going to Littlebrook School on Rolling Need and then that corner, that would create an unsafe corner, I think, putting the garage, you know, at that spot in the front. Aesthetically, we didn't think it was proper and I think from a safety perspective, it wouldn't be in anybody's good interest.
So we decided to keep the existing garage and just add to it toward the rear of the property.
So north is to the left on your diagram, is that right?
This way.
Oh, more that way.
Yeah.
More up and down, okay.
Right, so this part of the house is really bright and sunny and they get a lot of light in this direction. The setback to height is also a noncompliant zoning issue, but we are lowering the ridge and so improving on that, although not meeting it.
So the garage extension will have its own door as well, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
So there will be three sets of doors?
Yeah, that's right.
As I remember, there's a tree in the way for doing that, is that right?
I think there might be on the corner, in that corner, yes.
Yeah, so that tree will be removed, presumably.
Right. There are many trees in the front, too. There are some really beautiful ones right along here and another one about here, so and then the gardens in the back are really quite beautiful as well. So we thought that was the best option. It's not changing the overall look of the cape and the neighborhood very much at all. So that's all.
And the rest of the things that you're doing that are legitimate and you don't need to ask permission for are filling in the space between the existing garage and its extension and the house and you're just taking that up?
That's correct.
A couple of stories, yes.
That's right.
Okay. Are there other things you need to tell us?
No.
Do we have any questions? I've always got concerns about light pollution in areas and you're putting a garage there which means that there will be lights presumably outside and what I would normally try and get the board to do is to condition any variance we grant you such that the light source itself cannot be seen from neighboring properties and there is not light spill from your light source over the property lines. So that would certainly be one condition. Is there an issue of drainage? You've increased the roof area a little.
Not that I know of, no.
No, so you will be just having a gutter along the tree side of the garage and the bounce path?
That's correct.
And that will flow onto your driveway and into the street? Is that the...
Yes.
Is that the plan? And as I remember, there aren't any other houses close enough that that will be a problem?
No.
Okay, so that set of thoughts satisfies me at any rate.
Are you planning to keep the parking place, that little driveway bit that goes off? Yes.
At this point, that was part of the plan. It was there and...
Existing, yeah. And we don't have an issue with impervious coverage. I can hear you. We don't have an issue with impervious coverage. It's, we meet that requirement. Yeah, I'm just concerned with, we have a lot of questions about parking in the front yard. I see. And I know that that's already there, so you can keep it, but I'm also just, I mean, it's a big deal and a lot of people around here think it's a big deal and you're now going to exacerbate the nonconformity into the front yard on the, I guess, the Deer Path side and you also have now this, I mean, you have this now like open parking place in the front yard also. So I guess I'm just wondering... I imagine it's up to you guys if you want to get rid of it. What would we grant this variance? Suddenly you've got tons of parking in your front yard, which is a huge problem in town.
How else would we pay for the house? We would sell parking. No, no.
I don't think that spot is of dire need to the owners, so if it would, please, if you'd get rid of it, I'm sure that would not be a problem.
That's a requirement, that's what we could do.
Okay.
Sorry? Yes, that's what I'm going to ask. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this case? I see, oh, yes. If so, please come forward. There is a microphone, you'll have to...
Mr. Riss, Bob Russell, 88 Rolling Need Street.
Sir, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say we're the neighbors on the nine and a half foot side.
I have a job hearing you, so I'm not sure whether your microphone is on or whether you're just not talking into it.
Okay. We're the neighbors right immediately adjacent on the nine and a half foot side and I'd just like to pretty much agree with what's been said here. It's a very difficult lot. It has two front yards. They've taken the care to not look for variances between us and their side. They've pulled the additions back behind the 15-foot setback line and they're under the 1 to 1 setback angle, so I think that we don't have any particular objection to this. Our primary concerns are two trees, one which is in the side yard and a large ash which is quite far back in the backyard. And, you know, we've spoken to the Blooms about being careful during construction for that and the increased setback on our side actually also helps the cedar tree between the two of us, so we have no objection.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Did you want to talk? You can come and make a comment if you wish to. No? Okay, you're fine, good. Okay, thank you very much. All right, so then we will go into what is called executive session, which is always public, and decide what we feel. Any comment from you?
Yeah, well, I actually, I do support it. Ordinarily, I would object to an increased degree of noncompliance, but this lot presents an unusual problem with the two front yard setbacks. So I think, you know, in a sense, the compactness of the house and the difficulty of the lot, I mean, the additions at least keep everything together and minimize the intrusion on the lot, so I would support it.
Okay. Any other comments?
I agree with Steve. I think I typically do worry a lot about front yard parking and front yard intrusion, actually, and just because it's a corner lot, I mean, you knew that when you bought it, so you had two front yards, but since you've decided not to tear the house down and you are going to keep this existing garage, I do think that this is probably the best way to handle the extra storage.
Yeah. Well, I did look at the site fairly extensively on a Sunday morning when it was cold and basically I think that this is a fairly good compromise. I don't think it violates the spirit of the zoning. The business of two front yards is something that always worries me because I have a house just like that. In the days when I did it, it was legitimate. So I think it's a satisfactory approach to solving a problem which, garages somehow are never big enough and you'll be back in five years... which garages somehow are never big enough. And you'll be back in five years asking for yet another bay or something. There we are. Okay. Any other comment?
I have also noticed in our discussions that sometimes we take a dim view of people who want more space for junk in their garage, or equipment, as we would call it. But to me, it seems like the greater good is that the house is being preserved.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's important, and that it sounds like it fits in with the character of the neighborhood. So I think it's important to stay with the, you know, the actual, not just the spirit, but the letter of the law sometimes. But that's how I'm understanding this one. It seems like that's, the greater good is keeping the house, improving.
If there's no further comment, I would make a motion to approve. I would want to listen to Ms. Clayton to see what she might want to add, if anything, regarding that parking.
Well, I mean, I think you already have the parking, so I think you can keep it. Your grandfather did on it. But I did want to bring it up because it is a big deal around here, front yard parking, so you may not want to use it too much.
I want to say, too, that I agree with the proposal. It's well presented. And you have, I was also there and looked at it. And you're dealing with a very compact space. And this is an imaginative solution, given the barriers that you have. So I, you know, again, I agree with the panel that, you know, there are issues, but I think your proposal overcomes them.
Okay. So do we have a motion? And a second?
I so move.
You move to accept?
Yes.
With my conditions?
As always.
Okay. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Could you pull the roll for us, please?
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Ms. Rockstrom?
Yes.
Chairman Ruiz?
Yes.
Ms. Suri?
Yes.
Mr. Tenham?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much. The next one we're going to see on our television screens. And it is for 304 Ewing LLC owner, RB Holmes is the applicant. And the case number is Z1616346V. Everything is in order, and we can.
Yes. Noticing as an owner, the board has jurisdiction.
So I'll ask Mr. Bridger to put the essence of his memorandum to us on the record, and then I'll ask you to make your case.
Thank you.
Mr. Bridger.
The applicant, RB Holmes, is requesting a hardship C1 variance to permit construction of a new single-family house on a non-conforming lot which does not meet the required lot area. The property is located in the R8 Zone District and is subject to the use regulations in accordance with Sections 10B, 253, 255, and 246 of the former Princeton Township Land Use Ordinance. The existing single-family use is permitted as of right. Subject lot is noncompliant with the required lot area. The requirement's 8,500 square feet. The existing lot area is 6,869. Existing single-family will be demolished, and a new structure will be constructed. Subject property is located between Ewing Street and Linden Lane. I note that both of the adjoining lots have lot areas smaller than the required 8,500 square foot minimum lot areas. I'm asking that the applicant revise the survey to reflect that the property has two front yards setbacks along each of the street frontages. The applicant indicated that the proposed dwelling will comply with all the bulk requirements. He needs a C1 variance for the required lot area. As I indicated earlier, the existing lot area is 6,869 square feet. The requirement's 8,500. He's requested consideration under the C1 criteria. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Bridger? No. Okay, Mr. Tarr, if you can, you'll be sworn in by a.
Gentlemen, if you state your names for the record, please.
Robin Barsky.
Chris Tarr.
Do you both swear firm? Any testimony you give this will be truthful.
Yes. Yes.
Good evening. Usually, young Daniel Barsky is with me to make these presentations, and he prepared the three slides that I have for you. Daniel's on his honeymoon. So I'll, if I may, present these for him. The first of the three slides is taken from the site plan which you have. The zoning requirement chart is on the right. And highlighted is the one pre-existing nonconformity, and that is lot area. As Mr. Bridger pointed out, the lot is 6,869 square feet where 8,500 feet are required. To the left, we've put the lot itself. Ewing Street is here at the bottom. And Linden Lane is here to the back. This is a 25-foot front yard setback that's properly marked. Mr. Bridger determined that there are two front yards in this unusual situation where a lot is just which between two.
On both floors. It's like being on a corner.
On another evening, I might ask for an interpretation of that. But here, you see that it shows a 15-foot rear yard. Another 10 feet here is not going to make any difference. So 25 to 25 it is. And so it's understood that the building envelope is here, a hypothetical building envelope is here in yellow. And Mr. Bridger's asked that the drawings be modified to show this rear yard is 25 feet rather than 15, which is acceptable. This might be an appropriate point to indicate that the proposal is to build a home which conforms in all respects to the municipal FAR and other requirements, and also have its light sources not visible from adjacent parcels, which is acceptable to the applicant. The next slide shows Linden and Ewing as a group. The subject property is lot number five is in green. Lots which comply with the zoning on those two blocks are in red, and there are three of them. Lots which do not comply are in yellow. And according to Daniel's calculation, 87% of the lots on those two blocks are noncompliant. As we know, 67% of the lots in Princeton are noncompliant. This happens to be a larger percentage than other locations. And the last slide shows just the subject lot and the lots on either side of it. As Mr. Bridger pointed out, all of them are deficient, so that acquiring land from either of them or selling land to either of them would not bring about any conformity. The subject lot is .16 acres. The one below it on the slide is .16, and the one above it is .15. So they're all deficient. And so, in our view, that presents a C1 variance condition. And there's no way to make this a conforming lot, and yet the home is obsolescent and could be replaced.
Mr. Tarr, would you like this to be your exhibit one?
The three slides.
All three slides?
And I can get them to staff later tonight or first thing in the morning electronically.
The question of trees on the lot, that's of some concern to the neighbors, as I understand it. There's a big fir tree in the front, and there's, I think, a fairly substantial tree somewhere in the backyard, which was difficult to get into because of the fencing you put to keep zoning board members out. Do you want to comment on what's going to happen to the trees? Are they all going to be taken down?
I was just talking briefly with Mr. Barsky. On the site plan which you have, there are two trees at the very front of the lot, well within the setback area.
Yeah.
At the bottom of the drawing. There's one that's here.
There's a tree, a big tree there.
And those can't be disturbed. They're in the setback area.
Well, that's your proposed driveway.
Again, the driveway is hypothetical, and it could be moved over to avoid the tree. And for that matter, again, that, there's no.
Those are construction issues.
That's the existing drive, I believe. So it's a hypothetical envelope. You could flip it, move the drive. But those two trees, two large trees that are identified in the front, could readily be preserved.
All right. Well, they are big.
Okay, yeah.
It's a hypothetical driveway. There's no proposal to remove them. And if we want a condition so as to keep them both, that would be the safest way to assure that they be kept.
I was just gonna suggest that if they are taken down during construction, that native trees are planted in their place. Since neither are not, it looks like these are Norway spruce. That could be an idea.
By all means, typically, any trees that are taken down, the arborist comes and gives permission. And some percentage of native trees have to be installed, but I'm sure.
I'm working on her.
We would agree 100% if any of those two or three trees had to be taken down and replace them with native trees. It's sort of like the light source condition.
Now, you're building on quite a lot of the available space. The drainage from the roof is being carried out to a storm sewer in the road or something of that sort. What is the plan for water? I know the town engineer to some extent will deal with that, but I'm also interested in the issue.
The drawing doesn't reflect a storm drain in either street, so we would work with the municipal land use engineer to make sure that the runoff was appropriate.
We expect the runoff not to be onto neighboring properties, particularly as you're close and they're small.
We use dry wells and other means to avoid that.
Okay. And exterior lights are also, as you know, my thing. And in an area with a fairly high house density per acre, I think that's very important. So we would, I would put a condition on this, that exterior lights be screened such that the light source can't be seen from neighboring properties, and there is no light spillage over the property lines.
Understood and accepted.
Okay. Are there questions from members of the board? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to this case? No.
About the tree, could I just ask, did you say it was a Norwegian spruce?
Well, I don't know. There's an NS. It looks like maybe it's a Norway spruce.
Nor, and is that?
It's not a native tree to this.
Okay. So are you almost, are you implying that maybe it's not as valuable as other trees?
No, no. It's a 21-inch diameter, it looks like. It's a pretty big tree.
So we would like to save it.
No, it was just a comment. I don't think we're at that.
The arborist has a certain percentage of trees. If you replace a tree, it should be replaced with a native tree. I don't think the Norway spruce is a native tree.
No.
So if it's replaced, we would agree that all of the trees, the significant trees, would be replaced with native trees if they were removed. And there's not even a proposal now to remove any of the significant trees. But if they were, native trees are fine at the proper caliber.
Certainly, the neighbors across the road, at any rate, were concerned that the tree provides significant screening from the viewpoint of their garden and their view.
And shade, and lots of good features. So they're expensive to take down, so it's.
Okay. Good. Further comment, questions, comments? And we have a motion then?
I move to grant the variance.
So we have a move, motion to accept. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second it.
And is this with the standard conditions regarding lighting, drainage, and with respect to these two large trees, does the board wish to provide that they'll be retained, preserved, or?
You think the tree should be preserved? Isn't that what you accept?
I think so. Yeah, to the extent possible, absolutely. Yes.
That is a condition. So we have a question. Is there any discussion of a motion?
Mr. Chairman, we just had a question here. Obviously, there's an issue of whether a tree is in good condition or bad condition.
Yeah.
And we've always left that to the municipal arborist. If she determines that it's dying or.
If she says it's dying, a chainsaw may be approved.
Well, that's the only condition we would ask. Modify the condition in that way.
But is that a tip, that's a typical approval, that any trees that would be in question with development, you have to talk to the arborist?
Correct.
And get her approval. Okay.
Okay. Can you pull the roll for us, please?
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Ms. Rockstrom?
Yes.
Chairman Ruiz?
Yes.
Ms. Suri?
Yes.
Mr. Tenham?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good. Okay. So the last case of the evening is 119 Spruce Street. And the case number on that is Z1616335V. And this is for a rebuilding of a house on its existing footprint, I understand.
Correct.
So I'll ask Mr. Bridger to read his memorandum into the record. And after that, I'll ask you to make your case.
Mr. Bridger, I'll just quickly indicate that the noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction.
Thank you. Steve Atkinson's the owner and applicant. He is seeking a C1 variance to rebuild the existing house in the same footprint and exception to required side yard, combined side yard, rear side yard setbacks, and a height to setback. The existing house is a two-family dwelling, and that's a permitted use in this zone. It's in the R4 zone. It's subject to the use in bulk regulations in accordance with Sections 17A, 254, 258 of the former Princeton Borough Land Use Ordinance. The subject property is noncompliant with respect to the lot area. The requirement for a two-family is 6,600 square feet, and for a single-family, it's 6,000 square feet. The existing lot area is 4,481 square feet. It's also noncompliant with respect to the required 60-foot lot width. The existing lot width is 53 feet. It's noncompliant with the required 100-foot lot depth. The existing lot is 81.03 feet. Excuse me. The subject property is noncompliant with respect to the following bulk requirements. The required rear yard setback is 35, and the existing rear yard setback is 26 feet 11 and 1/4 inches. The smaller side yard setback requirement is 8 feet, and the existing side yard setback to the chimney is 5.5 feet. The combined side yard requirement is 20. The existing is 14.8 feet. And the height to setback ratio requirement is 3 to 1, and the existing is 3.521. The applicant is seeking to reconstruct the subject property within its current footprint. The existing building will be demolished down to the foundation and reconstructed in its current location. The former Princeton Borough Land Use Ordinance, Section 17A 403, permitted structures to be rebuilt in the same footprint and floor area, as long as no new noncompliances were created or any existing degrees of noncompliance were increased. That ordinance was repealed and took effect upon the publication date of Christmas Day, 2015. The applicant submitted their application on the Monday, December 28. They missed the deadline by a couple days. Proposed development will expand the attic area, creating a third floor, which complies with the floor area ratio. Utilizing the existing footprint of the building will require the following variances. The smaller side yard setback requirement's 8. They require a setback of 5.8 feet, which is to the overhang. The larger side yard setback is 12. They require 9.8-foot setback to the overhang. The combined side yard setback is 14, or 15.6 to the overhang. The requirement's 20. The height to setback ratio is 3 to 1, and the proposed will be 3.4 to 1. The height to setback ratio is 3 to 1, and the proposed will be 3.4 to 1. That's on the west side, at the front part of the house. The rest of the height to setback ratios are in compliance. And the rear yard setback is 26.9 feet. As I indicated earlier, measurements are to the roof overhang. If a house meets the setback, roof overhangs are permitted, but this house is slightly off of the existing setback, so the setbacks are taken to the overhang.
And the overhang is of the order of a foot?
I think it's a foot and a half, and I tried to measure the existing. It looks like the existing is a foot or nine inches. It's a little... It's a little less. And they've requested consideration under the C1 hardship.
Good. Okay.
Any questions? I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Bridger? Okay. So if you would make your case?
I think Carlin had a question. Here.
Why don't we have everyone identify themselves on the record, and then we can swear everyone in together?
Frank Falcone, Princeton Junction Engineering.
Steve Atkinson, homeowner.
Kathy Knight, night architects.
All right. You will swear if one of your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes.
Yes. Well, I was just going to start off. I'm Steve Atkinson. I grew up here, and when I moved back, I always wanted to find a place downtown. And I thought I found the perfect place here. It was the proverbial worst house on the block that would require just a simple renovation. And as, not surprisingly what happens with a lot of these things, it became not so simple. And that's where I am today, so.
I'm going to refer to the architect's plan. It is SP5. I guess we can call this A1.
Mr. Falcone, I know you've testified many times before the board. You just want to confirm for the record your licensing and your profession.
Yes, I am a licensed professional planner and land surveyor in the state of New Jersey. I've testified before this board several times. As I stated, I did not perform any surveying or plan preparation, but I did digest the plans that the architect prepared, and I did make several observations in the field. I concur with what Derek has referred to as the nonconformities and the proposed variances. I realize that the ordinance has recently changed. I'm not so sure that the reason for that change was appropriate in this particular case. I think it was really developed for different reasons. This neighborhood has many, many duplex structures, some single-family. We are right here in the yellow shaded area, and the green are the structures around us. And I think you can see that our structure is much smaller in mass and size than just about every other one. I was hard pressed to find a building that was smaller than the one that's there now. The same goes with regard to the setbacks, the front, side, and rear. They're represented by the heavy red lines. And again, you would be hard pressed to find any conforming structure in this neighborhood. The zoning has just changed to a point where all the structures are older, and they just don't conform. So with that said, I believe the hardship exists that, number one, we're dealing with a neighborhood that is the character are all large structures, some of them duplexes. And we cannot acquire additional lands from adjoining to make ourselves whole. We cannot improve it without exacerbating other properties with respect to their zoning. So I really think that the proposal before you this evening, although it goes against the putting back a structure at the same size and having variances, but I think in this case, it's appropriate. And the reasons I believe it's appropriate is, number one, the setback dimensions that we're asking for are really at what they are now. So there really, physically, is not going to be a large difference. As a matter of fact, some of them are improved by small amounts. The only, I think, feature that will be different is that they are going to convert the attic to a third floor. So there'll be an... It will be taller. It will be elevated. However, it still meets the side yard to height ratio... Well, actually, it will maintain the existing side yard to height ratio. 3 to 1 is maximum, and this is going to be 3.4 to 1. It is currently 3.4 to 1. So I think visually, it's going to look very similar to what's there. There will be no trees or disturbance. It's going to be built on top of the existing foundation. The project architect, I think, is going to put forth some testimony that demonstrates the advantages of doing that. And basically, there really is no detriment to the Princeton Zone Plan or what I would consider the recent ordinance. I think the spirit and intent is met. I think it's going to be in character with the other structures. Actually, some of the architectural features will match some of the other structures better than the existing structure does now. So I'll let the project architect elaborate on that. But I believe this is an improvement, and I believe it is in spirit with the Zone Plan. I think there's... Any benefits outweigh any detriments that could come.
Kathy Knight, I'm a registered architect in New Jersey. I just wanted you to be able to see it up there. I know you have these in your packet as well, so I was just trying to tip it a little bit. Can you see what I'm talking about here? Okay. So this is the... The heavy dark line here is the existing footprint of the house, and the red line is the existing setbacks. We were intending to just renovate this house in the existing footprint, and it turns out that the construction of the home is solid masonry walls all the way up to the attic. So in order to leave those walls, we are leaving a very inefficient energy-wise home because there's no insulation in the walls as it is now. The... We would have to build walls inside of the existing walls, which is a hardship for a tiny house. And we would be looking at kind of custom windows. So the intention was... The proposal was to reconstruct this with new, energy-efficient walls over the existing foundation. And that's where we ran into the new ordinance that does not allow reconstruction in the same location. So we feel that it's not... It's a hardship to consider leaving the old walls, and it's not in the town council's goals for energy efficiency nor for the code requirements for the new homes that we're looking at now. We also have a couple other points. There is existing a two-family home now, so this will be converted to a single-family residence. So that will limit the amount of traffic and noise on the site and parking requirements. You've already heard about the setback situation, so I just really wanted to talk a little bit about the construction there. If you look at the floor plans, the proposals, right now, it's a four-bedroom home, and it's two families with four bedrooms on the second floor. We're converting the second floor to a master suite with two bedrooms, so we're actually just creating three bedrooms on the second floor and expanding into the attic space with a fourth bedroom. So the intention was to maintain a four-bedroom home in this location. The overall size is fairly modest still. It's 2,200 square feet, including additional 500 square feet in the attic to get that fourth bedroom. We already talked about how it'll exceed energy code requirements. The other things that we're proposing is that there's an existing outside access stair to the basement for servicing mechanical equipment, and we are just expanding that slightly to allow for it to be a code-compliant stair. It's a very, very narrow stair in the back of the house right now. So we're taking the same stair configuration, but just widening it slightly to the backyard. There'll be a new air...
The setback of the driveway from the property line?
Pardon me?
You say you're widening the driveway that goes...
Not the driveway, just an access to a stair to the basement. Access to the basement.
I misunderstood. I thought you had mentioned the side driveway.
The side driveway is remaining the same.
It's going to remain the same?
Yes. No changes there.
Ms. Knight, you testified regarding your plans SP2 and SP3. Is that right?
Yes, and SP5 is what Mr. Falcone testified on, and I have one more elevation sheet.
All right. Why don't we just... I think Mr. Falcone called these Exhibit 1, so we'll make these 2 and 3...
And 4.
And 4.
Okay, perfect. The elevation, I've included the existing front yard photo here, which I don't think you had in your packet. And then here's the proposed front yard elevation. We feel that the home is going to be very consistent with the other homes in the neighborhood. The use of materials will be consistent as well. It'll be wood clambered. It'll have asphalt shingles on the roof. It'll be a pitched roof with dormers. We're adding a front covered porch. It has a... We're expanding the existing front covered porch in a way that's all conforming. The additional space in the attic is allowed by the floor area ratio, so there's no changes there. So we feel that we're just creating a house that's very much in scale with the rest of the neighborhood. If anything, it's on the more modest size for the other houses in the neighborhood. And again, what's allowable for floor area ratio, we are just trying to reconstruct it on the existing foundation wall. We don't really want to take out the existing foundation and add that to the landfill. And since it is so close for all the setbacks, that that seemed like a logical proposal for this particular property. I think that's all I had to say about the exhibits. Are there any questions at this point?
I noticed you have exterior lights shown on the building. I will reiterate my normal condition that the light sources for those lights should not be visible to neighboring... On neighboring properties, and there should be no light spill from them over your property line.
Okay, that's fine.
I think that's particularly important in areas where buildings are fairly close to each other.
Right. No problem.
I'm infuriated by my neighbor's garage lights, which shine into my bedroom all night long.
Sure. I understand.
Okay. Are there any questions so far? No? Is anyone in the audience here to address the case? No one? Okay. So you have other things you wish to tell us, or we've come to an appropriate ending of your presentation?
I think that was the end of the presentation.
Good. So let's go into executive session. Are there any questions we have or any comments we have?
I have a question about the basement, because you mentioned the poor access to it. How deep is... You're keeping the same footprint, but how will the basement... Will the height be... It'll be the same height?
The depth of the basement floor will be the same. The slab will be in the same location. So what we're talking about is there's a stair on the outside, on the back, that's only about 30 inches wide to get down to it with a door at the bottom. So we're just making it 3 foot 6... We're adding a foot to the width to actually make it code-compliant.
And the ceiling height in the basement is what?
I believe it's 7 feet.
It's a 7-foot?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay. You also mentioned in here about a front porch. I know there was one in the drawing. How far will that come forward?
We're taking the allowable 6-foot by 8-foot porch that can project into the front yard. So we're being code-compliant with what's allowable. Okay.
I think so, isn't it? The ability to build on the same foundations is a right in the borough. Is that right?
Well, I think... If you grant the variances, they can build on the foundation. I think, a little background on this, the town's concerned about FAR with the rash of tear downs on McMansions. I don't think this falls into that category, but this was part of the ordinances that were approved at the end of last year to tighten FAR. So I think that was more of the intent of this, was to control FAR, which they comply with, as opposed to, you know, it was almost not an intended consequence, in my opinion, that the noncompliant grandfather clause was also stricken at the same time. So... But they can build, you know, if you grant the variance, they can build on the existing foundation. I'm assuming they've done their structural, mechanical engineers looked at it, and it's ready to be built on, so.
Okay. Does that... Good. So what think we?
Thank you for clarifying that.
I'm sorry?
I thanked Mr. Bridger for clarifying that. I didn't quite understand what we were supposed to do with that law that was repealed on December 25th. Now I have a better understanding. It's time to proceed.
Are there any comments about the proposed thing? If not, then maybe we need to have a motion and a second. We can...
I'll make a motion to approve it as presented.
I'll second the motion.
So did you make a motion?
I did.
You did. I'm sorry, I was distracted.
That's okay.
So do we have a second for the motion?
Yes.
Good. Okay. I didn't... I missed both of you. I don't know my... I always thought I heard well at low frequencies, but maybe not anymore. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any need for discussion? We've conditioned the motion with my...
Standard conditions in terms of drainage and lighting.
Standard light and drainage concern. Okay. So could you call the roll for us, please?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Rockstrom?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Ms. Suri?
Yes.
Mr. Tenham?
Yes.
Thank you. It's approved.
Good. Thank you very much. We, as a board, have an additional executive session where our attorney is going to let us into some of the interesting insights about the legal things that we're supposed to understand.
I don't know if the board would...
Sit up here?
Yeah, I was gonna... I don't know if you'd be more comfortable to sit around the table, because it's not easy to hear on the mic, but...
There used to be an ordinance that would allow you to build on the exact... Because you tore down your house, and you built on the exact same footprint, you could build...
Please don't sit around the table.
I believe you could, as long as you were staying within the footprint in terms of the setbacks, you can ask them this, but you didn't have to come here and have a right with the law. Well, it sounds like they struck that law and said you no longer have that right because you didn't want the McMansions to go up.
All righty, so now the board is going to adjourn into executive session, and we will just review some educational issues with respect to zoning variances and see if anybody has questions.